Next item, please.
Next item is discussion items. First item on the agenda is the 2017-2018 second budget revision. Board Report seventeen dash one three two.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
As part of our budget adoption process, we're required to go through a discussion item and have a public hearing. So today, we're gonna be combining the seventeen eighteen amendment number two and the seventeen or eighteen nineteen original budget as part of one presentation. And at some point after the presentation, Dr. Mead, I would like you to just offer if there's any public comment. As part of one of the regulations we're required to do is to have this public presentation and allow the public to comment if they're interested. It's been advertised in a local paper, the Press and Guide, so if the old blue covers came in earlier, they should also have an opportunity after this presentation. So again, always turning off the mission statement of why we're here. So as the section sixteen of the Uniform Budgeting Act, obviously, we've already advertised in the local paper, we're required to have a truth in budgeting act. And that is a requirement that if our tax base, our actual mileage gets reduced, because we don't have a public hearing, it actually can reduce slightly due to the regulations. And there's also a second part of that which we call the headly effect, that if our tax base rises faster than the rate of inflation, it can also roll back. And that's part of this discussion process. So what we do is, after we have this public hearing, we have what we call an L four oh two nine form that goes to the cities in Wayne County and to the state, showing what as a public institution, what taxes we're gonna levy to the public. And that'll be part of the presentation that you'll see in a little bit. And then also, what we talk about is our expenditures, what we're gonna have for revenue and expenditures in totality, and what the net effect of that is. So we'll cover that shortly going through this whole presentation. And feel free to interrupt me as we go along if we have any questions. Again, just showing you.
It's not showing.
But just showing you that the actual, all the funds that we do. We have, obviously, the capital project funds, which deals with our building and site fund, the last remaining funds of the two thousand fourteen bonds, and our new part of that project, our process, which is the enhancement funds. We actually have some capital projects that we use under the enhancement funds. Next one is the debt funds. And we have bonds that the voters have approved for us. We are required to have those funds set aside in their own separate funds, so we account for the money separately and make the bond payments on an annual basis. Then we have special revenue funds. That's dealing with all our grant funds, which we call them the funded projects, which deals with our Title I, Title II, special ed, flow-through, which is also special at risk, which is something new that we've gotten this last year, and a few other administrative grants for adult ed and a few other ones. And then whatever's not covered in all those other funds, all falls into the general fund. So general fund is usually our largest one, that's our main operating fund. So when we look at a budget, there's three main items we look at when we talk about revenue. It's the taxes, it's our foundation allowance, and our number of students. That's how proposal A works. And we've been in the same kind of format since nineteen ninety-four for school funding. On the expense side, obviously, staffing is our largest cost. Then obviously, the infrastructure and our instructional program. Those are the three main items we look at, that we look on the expense side. So looking at the taxes, this is our first one for the revenue. You can see on this chart, if you could actually see it out there, but it basically looks at what we actually levy for our properties in Dearborn and portion of Dearborn Heights. We have our homestead properties, that's your main household. So that's a separate tax base that we look at, and that's taxed differently than non-homestead, which is your corporate, industrial, and second homes and apartment complexes and things like that. So on our homestead, we have a hold harmless mileage, and that's because of proposal A came into being, that we were able to levy additional taxes to maintain our current revenues when it came into play. And that's gonna be a six point one seven mils, the same as it was last year. All property is our debt mileage, that is four point eight two mils. That gets levied both on homestead and non-homestead. So that's across the board for our debt mileage. And then in addition to that, we have our eighteen mils, which gets levied on non-homestead property. Commercial has a break, they only get charged six mils. But everybody else on that non-homestead is eighteen mils. Now, that's what the money that we actually levy that comes to us here in the district. There's an additional six mils that the state levies to fund proposal A. So those six mils across all property goes to the state, and that helps fund as one of the components for the foundation allowance that comes back to us from the state. That money does not stay here, it goes directly to the state. Our actual tax base increased three point four one six percent. So that's the largest tax base increase we've had for many years, since probably about two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So it's a good thing to see. Now, that'll help us on our debt fund, it will help us in the enhanced mileage, it goes to Wayne recently, it comes back to us, and it will help us on our hold harmless. The actual, on the non-homestead, the eighteen mils goes to fund proposal A, that doesn't help us, 'cause the more taxes we raise, the less money we get from state aid, so it's a balancing act. So it doesn't affect our operation program, but it helps in the other funds. So this is the actual form, the L four oh two nine. There's a few things I just wanna point out on here. You can actually see that our tax rate went up three point four one six percent from last year, which is a good thing. You can see on column E, I believe, or six, that you guys should see that there's no headly effect, which is important to us. If there actually was a headly effect, we would have to actually go back to the public and ask for and raise and override the headly and actually raise the full amount. If we didn't do that, the state considers that we actually do levy the full amount, so it'd be lost revenue, like we'd not be able to recoup unless we went back to the public. But for Dearborn, there was no headly effect this year, so that's a good thing for us. And those are the things we find out at the very last minute. We didn't find out that information until two weeks ago. So it's really hard to plan for next year when we don't really have the information from Wayne County in a previous timeframe. And the other things on the far right, you'll see a couple of letters A and B. That's just when our taxes end. So for our voted operational of our hold harmless and our eighteen mils, that actually expires in two thousand twenty-four. So we have several years before that we actually have to worry about going out to the public and renewing that mileage. And on the debt mils, that's not something we have to go out, that's based on the actual repayment plan when we, when we actually sold the bonds. So you can see that is far off also. The college does have one coming up shortly, but that's not part of the K twelve arena. But we actually do the L four oh two nine for both entities. And it's submitted to the states, the counties, cities for on their behalf.
Before you move on.
Yes.
It says right here that the money you just mentioned, that expires twelve thirty-one eighteen, is that correct?
Correct.
So expires this year, but it's still funds.
Yes, 'cause the actual two components for Dearborn, everything's limited in the summer. So that's the summer of two thousand eighteen. And for Dearborn Heights, it's the summer of August and December, which is before that deadline. So they'll have a full year's levy for this year. But for next year, you'll have to actually do something of that one mileage to continue.
Okay, got it, so make sure. John asked me to put my glasses on, I just noticed that you had me down here in his chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll switch that over.
Sure, it's a tight one.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next one is showing, actually, the second part is obviously our foundation allowance. So this is a historical graph since the beginning of proposal A, showing where our foundation allowance started in nineteen ninety-five. And I can't read the screen either, so I have to cut. So that started at seven thousand ninety-four in nineteen ninety-five. You can see that in two thousand eleven, we were at eight thousand eight oh two. And during the new governor, the current governor came into office, he made a deduction of four hundred and seventy dollars, we dropped down to eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars per student. And that obviously hit us operationally, that we had to make as a district, a lot of cuts at that time. Our expected foundation allowance for next year is eight thousand seven hundred and seventeen, which is still lower than our highest thing, our highest foundation allowance in two thousand eleven. So I just wanna kind of show you a pictorial of where our foundation grant has gone over the years. So that's our foundation allowance, then we look at our student counts. We're currently, for FTE purposes, not head counts, it's actually FTEs, which is a full-time equivalent of twenty thousand nine hundred and one and point six four of a student for our FTE counts. And next year, we're estimating twenty-one thousand thirty-one point seven seven FTEs, which is an increase of roughly about a hundred and thirty-five students from this year to next year for our student counts. So we are still growing in that, in that capacity. So looking at our student history from two thousand, at two thousand, we were at sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five students for FTEs in two thousand. And for two thousand eighteen, or nineteen, eighteen nineteen, we're at twenty-one thousand thirty-one. So you can see, we've had a progressive increase in students as we go along. One thing I wanted to note, that in two thousand four is the last time we actually built a new school in Dearborn, a brand-new school, not an addition. And we've grown like thirty-three, thirty-four hundred kids since then. So you're wondering why we have capacity issues that we're continuing to grow. And, you know, additions help, but it doesn't necessarily help grand scale of actually adding a new school. So it's just something to note. We'll be sharing this kind of information with our infrastructure committee as we start coming here this August.
There aren't too many school districts in the state that are growing.
No, that thirty-four hundred students is largely what a lot of school districts in Michigan have in their total.
That's very nice.
That's what's keeping us alive.
So again, interrupt me if you have any questions, I'm gonna keep going. All right, so as one of our budgeting tools, you've seen this form before, where we look at our history of our fund balance and our current status of our budgets, and we start doing estimates or projections for next year's budget. So this year, we're estimating about roughly eleven hundred, one million, one hundred thousand dollar surplus for this current operating year. And again, we still have reserves in there, 'cause obviously we haven't finished the year, so there's still some money in there that we don't think we're gonna spend. And so we're looking at a surplus of roughly about one point six million dollars for this year. And that will end us at a roughly combined general fund budget of thirty million dollars roughly, which is thirteen point eight six percent. So then we look at what our projections for next year. We assume that surplus is gonna continue, 'cause we're basing our next year's program on our current program. So that's why you see that one point six million is our starting of the surplus that we know we have to kind of work with, assuming the reserves stay the same. We're looking at a hundred and thirty-five student increase, that'll bring in roughly one point one million dollars. We're looking at the, obviously, the enhancement mileage is gonna continue, so that's gonna bring in additional roughly seven point four million. It's not gonna be the full seven point eight, seven point nine million we'd expect because of cash flow purposes. We have some money that won't come until after the next school year. We are looking at a health insurance increase of three point four percent, that's kind of set. We know that is, because we're a cap district, so that percentage is set. Our salary increases are estimated about four point two million, that's when people actually move from a step to the next step. Our salary increases are estimated at four point two million. Now, not all union contracts are settled, but we have to make assumptions so we can make sure we have a balanced budget for next year. Our retirement rate increase is going up from thirty-six point eight eight to thirty-eight point three nine. So again, the retirement rate continues to rise, as even though the state gives us money to help offset it, it still doesn't cover the full amount. Now, you'll see that number zero, 'cause it's combined later, but that's roughly about a seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase, just on the retirement rate itself. We're estimating about roughly fifty retirements, and that helps us, so that saves us roughly about two point nine million dollars if people leave at the higher steps. We hire new teachers, so there's a money in between that we're able to offer, you know, keep into our budget to help offset the raises or steps we give annually. The foundation increase is estimated at one nineteen. Now, the state is currently going through that process right now, they haven't finished it. And they're actually looking at a hundred and twenty dollars, so it's slightly higher than what we estimated as we prepared the budget. So it'll give us a little extra cushion there. Our twenty M categorical is going away, as it rolls into our foundation allowance. The high school categorical was on the fence of whether the state was gonna offer it again, that's gonna continue. So that money will stay in there, that's roughly twenty-five dollars per high school student. And obviously, we're planning on using the enhanced mileage from last year's collection, so that'll be an expense of roughly about six point five million dollars. And then we have, on the budget matrix, we have some additional ins and outs that we'll cover in a little bit, of roughly two hundred thousand dollar savings. And so that gives us an operating surplus of, next year, of an estimated six hundred and eight thousand dollars for next year. So we are still in the positive when it comes to that. So I won't spend a lot of time on this screen, but just in the highlighted centers in the middle with the red parentheses, just showing our current estimates of the twenty-one thousand thirty-one students, the hundred and thirty-five student increase, and that kind of gives you that one point one million dollars we talked about. The last column that we actually have for the revenue consensus hasn't been finalized yet, so we're actually using the most likely scenario as we go forward. The other thing I wanna show, on the salary adjustment, we made an estimate of roughly three point oh eight percent increase in salaries for next year. That's an average across all unions. It's not exactly even, 'cause there's obviously different number of employees in each category. But we also share that money with at-risk ones that were new this year, and also enhanced mileage. We use enhanced mileage just when we go above and beyond our normal percentages for staffing, that if we wanna reduce class sizes in a certain grade level because it's close, so we'll hire additional staff to kind of bring that number down to a more management level, give a little cushion, so if new kids come in, we don't want to actually hire a teacher right away, that sort of thing. Counselors and social workers, we're able to actually be more efficient and charge some of that to at-risk funds, 'cause they help with K three and for middle school students and high schools for graduation. So we're trying to be very efficient how we use the grant money, and we usually like to put salaries in grant funds, so we can actually make sure it all gets spent. We don't have to worry about the fluctuation from year to year on carryover funds. So we try to be efficient how we do staffing, so that's why that number three percent is kind of an average across all funds, trying to maximize grants as much as possible. So, question?
You're finished?
Almost, almost. So I won't go through all these, but these are some of the highlights of what's changed. Obviously, our attendance incentive was new this year, we actually went from six hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars for this year. Unfortunately, we don't know what the attendance incentive is gonna actually be until after the year is done. So that first payment in July is when we actually kind of balance that all out. In the past, that's been running at roughly a twenty-four percent utilization of the maximum amount that could be paid. This year, we're estimating that go up to forty percent. So raising it from six hundred to twelve hundred dollars actually helped us on our attendance throughout the district. So I will throw that one, but there are things in there, so you can read at your leisure, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask. No, I'm not done yet.
Okay. I'll try not to jump the gun.
So this is just looking at some of the things that are changing in the budget of large-ticket items. You know, one of the things in there, you'll see that for the textbook adoption, we did a large math textbook adoption this year of roughly about one point one million. And we budgeted one point two, so we came in after that, going, again, going to what we have to work with. But we don't expect that large of a adoption next year, so that money is dropping down to about seven hundred thousand for textbook adoption next year. So that five hundred thousand goes back into the general fund to be used for other purposes. That's an example of things that are in there, you can see how it goes up and down as we go through the process. So this is an important slide, what I like to show on this one is actually looking at an object code. So a lot of times, we deal with instruction versus non-instruction, but we also have to pay attention to the salary increase. And if you see on here, that actually highlighted the increase in salaries and benefits. Our salary and benefits are going up three point four percent in the general fund, which is roughly about a one percent increase overall of the entire budget. What does that mean? Is that means that there has to be an offset, 'cause obviously, we can't just keep adding money to salaries and not have it come from somewhere. So you can see further down, the downward arrows, where our supplies went down short, a little bit, our contracted services went down, our capital outlay went down. That's to help offset what our increase in supplies are. So obviously, there's a balancing game there, and our district has been able to afford our high salary costs, not that they're high individually, but in total, the entire district, because we've been growing. So even our foundation allowance is lower than it has been at the highest level. If we keep growing, that money helps us be able to have higher and better class sizes in our state. And better support services by a strong ELL program, things like that. So it's good. And the last one at the very bottom is, we also like to see instruction will be high, a high percentage, 'cause that's direct instruction to kids, which is good. You know, that's where you like to have money in our classrooms. And you can see that percentage went up roughly about a percent from last year to this year, or for projected for next year, showing that we're actually still putting money in the classroom which we should be. So looking at the combined budgets, you can see that the general fund has three components. It's a general fund, enhancement, athletic. As you can see, that the general fund, actual operating side, our fund balance projected for the end of this year is roughly ten point seven seven percent. So you can see that it's not that thirteen percent we show on the top page, 'cause it included all the funds, but just the general operating one is ten point seven seven percent. And that's just showing some of the significant changes before we go from this year to next year, showing the things that obviously there's large adjustments have to be made, so I just wanna make sure I give you some examples of what's changing. And if you have any questions on those, I can also go over those in greater detail another time. So looking at next year, so our actual fund balance and actually just the general fund portion will be ten point eight one percent, so a slight increase for our economy. Looking at all the funds, I actually skipped almost all funds. You can see that, just one thing I wanna point out here, if you look at our total revenue on the far right for all funds, we have broken the three hundred million mark.
Wow.
So just looking at all the funds with capital projects, debt funds, special revenue, and general funds, our total budget is now over three hundred million dollars. And that's, that's a large budget. Keep feeling nice and stuff there.
I'm not sure of.
And just to show on the special revenue funds, you see a large decrease in that column, the second column over, the net effect. And that's because, as you've noticed, that we have a larger than allowed fund balance in the cafeteria fund. So we've started a large capital replacement program in that, so that's why you see a negative operating fund. It's not on our operational side, it's our capital improvement program. And looking at all funds for next year, you'll see that the capital replacement in the cafeteria fund continues. And then also, in the capital project fund, this is the last year where we can spend bond funds for the two thousand fourteen bond, we wanna close that out. So Troy will have to do a large capital investment to get into, in the equipment, to kind of get that down to a zero balance.
Is that just this year coming up?
Eighteen nineteen, yes, so it'll be the last year.
Then it's done.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so some of the key issues, obviously, we don't have the school aid fund finalized yet, so obviously, we have watched that as it goes through the process this week. They're saying by the end of this week, it should be finished. But that obviously will be part of our First Amendment as we go through next year. Obviously, we'll still monitor the end of this year, 'cause we have several weeks to go. You never know when something might break down of a large, of a large nature. And obviously, staffing, we had a long, two-hour staffing meeting today of looking at class sizes for next year and seeing where we need to be, and we're adding people now, 'cause it's better to do it now versus the beginning of the school year when the class size already set. So we're continually having those kind of conversations. Then obviously, long-term, we have the infrastructure committee that's gonna be starting up in August. We have shortened and long-term funding for capital improvements. Obviously, the Dearborn High addition is expected to be completed by the start of the second semester next, next year, and that's kind of on time, so that should be good. And then obviously, the final negotiations with the other units that have not settled yet. And now, I'm done.
Any questions from the board?
Yes.
I was gonna ask this at the end of the meeting for information purposes, but since it's on here and it caught my attention. I noticed that in a lot of the donations from the foundation and from other things that, and, and we just approved a lot of computers and that kind of stuff. And you're talking about the tech bond that has six million dollars in it approximately, I guess that we gotta get used up. I remember that recently, the Education Foundation purchased Promethean boards for, I think, Salina last month. Who's responsible, but then we had Promethean boards on this time for something else that we purchased. I don't know how many schools are still doing without certain pieces of equipment. And I don't know if the Promethean board is a technology item or not, I would assume it is. Why, why is there this disparity of where things get funded from? Sometimes a PTA is donating a Promethean board to a classroom as opposed to our purchasing it, those kinds of things. So, so why do we have this kind of disparity of whose responsibility it is to purchase this, especially when we have some funds that we need to utilize?
Okay.
I can copy, I can comment on that just because, and I know Mr. Patterson's here and he can answer the other questions too. One of the things, and this had happened prior to me being superintendent, but we looked at it immediately in the bond, because everyone was asking, well, where's the Promethean board? Now, I think they're called interactive boards, there's a new board that's not even a Promethean. And so what happened was, we had been, most of the boards prior to that were funded by either the Ed Foundation, a bond, or Title I. So the general fund has not been used to fund any of the boards. And so that, we've kept with that, because as soon as we did, we'd have a issue with not being able to fund them through the Title I funding. So that's kind of what's happened. And I can speak to it as a principal, 'cause I know when I was at Salina, I was able to fund a lot of those boards through that. I can also mention that, you know, the foundation, when they were looking for, and this is back, I think it was in oh seven, oh eight, and I'd just arrived at Deval, they decided to fund, you know, a whole school at Deval. And so what, that's the reason why you have them, there has not, we have not decided to move on the general fund, 'cause it would put us in predicament with our Title I funding.
But we have a technology bond that works, so what are we, yeah, so why? I'm just saying, if we have money available and we need to use it, how are we prioritizing what we use it for? And how are schools looking at how they go about asking for certain items? And who, and who should be responsible for purchasing it for them? Because maybe the foundation could have done something else with that money, and we could have used it to purchase the Promethean board last month. I mean, I'm, I'm just curious as to why there's, it doesn't seem to be consistent.
I can let Troy comment, but the one thing on the foundation, we did set up a system that any time it's approved, there's a pre look-through, if it's technology, they first contact Troy. If it's something in curriculum, they're going through the executive director, so the foundation has already, and actually, that was something that we started a year ago, I think you were on.
I was on, right.
We started that new process that we, 'cause they, you know, it was a way to streamline things, so there wasn't a redundancy. So there's always an administrative check to make sure that it's something that should be funded by the foundation.
And that's why I'm asking why, you know, why, why there is this difference? Because I was on the foundation last year, and the question was asked of me of the foundation chair when furniture was being requested as one of their, and she said, isn't that the school district's response? And she was confused as to what's our responsibility as opposed to something that should be a donated item? So.
First of all, I apologize for stepping out, I hear there was a Chromebook question. I apologize for that. Secondly, technology is one of those things that has changed drastically over even the last few years. And, and how it's used in education is changing as well. I've worked with the Education Foundation to bring a lot of that into alignment, and over the last couple of years, I think we've done a really nice job of being consistent and working together so that we are getting the appropriate materials and we're getting them in the right place. And as we move forward with the bond, that's, that, those are things that we look at. As Dr. Maleko talked about, we had to be very careful with Title I, because we were using Title I funds. And traditionally, we had always used Title I funds for Promethean boards. When I was a principal, I did pretty much the same thing as, as Dr. Maleko did, and put the Promethean boards in. Over the last couple of years, we're no longer buying Promethean boards due to the expense and the use of them. We are now buying interactive projectors and Promethean software, so that the teachers can continue to use the, the resources that they have, but then they also end up with a whiteboard that they can use. The issue with the Promethean board is, it could only be used as a display. It was wasted space otherwise in the classroom. Whereas with the interactive projectors, we're using whiteboards, and now teachers can use dry erase markers and utilize that space, and it becomes much more effective technology, and it becomes much more effective in the classroom. Sometimes, technology's the right answer for learning, sometimes it's not. Sometimes, good old writing is, is effective, and we need to make sure we're providing that experience as well. With the Chromebooks, I'm gonna try to answer the question I think was asked, and then.
Just basically what the shelf life is on those?
Five years.
Five years?
Pretty, pretty, a pretty hard-set five years, too.
And that's with, with kids using them, students?
With students, yep. The, the, the Chromebooks after five years are gonna be considered end of life, they won't be updated any longer. We work through the TAC, the Technology Advisory Committee, which has representation from schools around the district. And one of the things that we look at is whether we buy touchscreens or non-touchscreens. And after using them and following on what's going, what's happening, we're shifting back towards more non-touchscreens for third grade to twelfth grade. And we're getting the touchscreens for kindergarten to second grade. And this is based on our real-world examples. We watch what's going on, we visit schools, we, we work with teachers. We had hoped that some of the Android apps were gonna be ported over to the Chromebooks, and that just hasn't played out. And what we've noticed is, once kids start typing and once they start being much more text literate, they use the, they use the keyboard, they tend not to use the screen very much anymore. Whereas our kindergartners and our first graders, they have their hands all over those things. So, and it's more effective with, with, with them.
Got it.
There's also an additional cost for. There's also an additional cost for touchscreens and there's an additional repair cost for touchscreens. Touchscreens are much more expensive to repair, replace than non-touchscreens. So we try to monitor good instructional practice in what really works with real kids in the classrooms. We don't chase shiny things, we focus on things that make a difference with kids' learning. A few years ago, I had to try to convince people to buy Chromebooks and now if I walk down the hallway, it's, we need more Chromebooks. So we've been pretty, we've been pretty, pretty effective in, in getting them into place and getting them in the right place.
Well, I know in the beginning we heard a lot of complaints about whether they were effective, whether it was just some kind of fluff or a new technology that people were using, but seems to me it's like a mason who has to have his trowel to work. It, it, the computer is the, the work tool of modern life, so.
They are, and what we're really, what, our goal is to really make it so that technology is where it's needed, when it's needed. It's something that you pick up when you need and put down when you don't.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I do need to ask if there are any public comments. Anybody here this evening wants to comment on the budget? I do not see anybody rising to the occasion. Okay, Jeff. Certainly. I, could you come up so we can, so we can hear you, please?
To be recorded for YouTube poster clarity.
Hi, I'm Karen Stath Johnson, a food service employee, I just have a quick question. We had a surplus last year, correct?
Right.
At food service, and that is used just for like hard, like ovens, stoves?
No, it doesn't have to be, no. So, there's another question.
And, and my follow-up to that is there's a rumor that you're looking to hire a consulting company and I'm wondering why you're going that direction as opposed to coming to the people that actually have been doing the work all this time and might be able to give me answers to what your questions are.
You want to answer that one?
Well, I can, yeah, I can answer that one as far as on the consulting. So, and you sent out a memo you did to all the food service staff. Just first of all, it's not an outsourcing, it's the management because there's infrastructure. And so we don't have the infrastructure of the resources that some of these companies have to be able to deliver the same, you know, maybe over time we could, it could be developed, but we really don't have the internal capacity. And what we're talking about is different issues that, whether that be bringing in dieticians and chefs and other individuals that we've seen in these other districts that would help to enhance our offerings. We're very proud of the work, our workers. And that's why we've, we actually involved the union right from the start in discussions when we started this. And they seem to be, you know, happy that we're looking at enhancements. But we're, we value our staff, so I just want to make that clear first of all, Mr. Wall has, is that we're not looking at any changes with our staff. But what it may mean is bringing in these chefs or the dietitian or the other people that may be brought in and they would help to provide additional training to staff in the kitchens. And so it would be enhancement of what we're able to offer. And just because they have national affiliations, whether it be the food suppliers and other things, that we just don't have, we don't, we just don't have that infrastructure to be able to do it on our own. And again, we do have the infrastructure of our staff and that's why it, it's a good fit. In fact, Grand Blank, the one we went to, is a similar model where they have the affiliation, but then they have their own staff and they work seamlessly. And in fact, I was at a retirement party for Sue Carnell over at Westwood, they had the same thing. So these are very common companies that you see in most, in a lot of the districts across the state and nationally for that matter.
At, at what cost? At what cost do we bring in this management company?
Well, we're going to have an RFP going out, so at this point I don't know that I can comment on that until the RFP actually goes out and then we see the bids, so. But what I can tell you, because you asked about the food cert, and Mr. Wall, you can add to this. One of the things that we, we have discussed and we have to get state approvals is making it clear that because by state law, the food service budget has to stay separate versus the general fund. So we are not interested at all in using any funds from the general fund, it's going to be maintained out of the food service funding.
And obviously Mr. Murphy and Ms. Malosh are obviously going to stay with the district too, they're not going where, I, they're the two managers that are currently overseeing the food service program. And Jeff and I have also talked about adding money back into the budget on staffing. And that's included in this proposal.
And we have some members of the kitchen team, not just the union, that are actually part of the committee that's been going with us to the other districts too.
Correct.
That Mr. Lirini.
And just, just for her, other part of her question of what else can the surplus be used for? Can you explain how, how that surplus is?
Yeah, so the money has to stay in the food service program. It doesn't go elsewhere as Dr. Malaco referred to, it can't be taken elsewhere out of the budget, outside of indirect costs. But that's something we, we do on annual basis regardless. And the program is very profitable, so we have to invest it back into the program. One of the things, since we are such a large, over the actual allowed fund balance, capital replacement is the quickest way to get there and down to that level where it's more manageable to a three-month allowance.
Well, then my question would be, and maybe that, this is what they're kind of thinking, can it be used to hire staff or all that? So can it be used for those kinds of?
Yes. And obviously we can't discuss negotiations here, we're cognizant of that and that's part of that process.
And so part of it is a reinvest, is an investment in our students actually, going to our vision and our strategic plan. And looking at, you know, we do have this money available, so why not invest in, investing in our staff to invest in our students? And that's kind of what we're looking at, you know, doing.
At what, at what level do we need to have that surplus drop to, to be in compliance?
Three months, three months of an operation. So you look at our total expenditures for our food service costs divided by ten, and they give you a monthly basis of three times that's what we can have.
Okay.
So roughly about one point nine million, I believe. That's just the estimate I'll tell them.
Any other discussion?
I would, can I just add to that?
Yes.
I think that there'll be extra resources that will come to staff through this as well. Extra support, extra training, a lot of extra resources for staff to help our students.
And I do appreciate the question, that's only the second time in twenty-two years that I've actually had someone ask a question, well, good.
Congratulations, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. So at the next meeting on June twenty-fifth.
Six.
Twenty-fifth.
We have to vote.
Jeff, you'll actually see the actual resolution to adopt it, there won't be a presentation, but you actually will see the resolution that substantiate these numbers.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Last discussion item, we have policy updates, purchasing, I'm Dr. Malaco.
So I have Mr. Rengels and Ms. Ali Basie, this should be fairly short, but it's been, it's gone through.
Yeah, I've heard that before.
Hi, good evening, no promises, it'll be really short. Mr. Mike Rengels will just share the updates on the purchasing policy that's been discussed in the committee policy going through the last few board meetings.
It's really simple and really short. Essentially, we were required to come into compliance with federal guidelines with respect to our purchasing policy and add some additional language, and that was told to us or, or sent to us by the, the state. So we've added that language, we're now in compliance. And it's, it's due by July one of this year to be finalized.
You're done? That's the end?
That's the end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one question.
Oh, wait a minute, you're not done.
So are, did we just vote for that, are we voting for that on the twenty-fifth?
We, we didn't have it on and we're changing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
For that language.
Trusty Thorpe. Our next item, please.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
We got something here from McDonald's, it looks like.
McDonald's.
Free quarter pounders.
Just what we need.
Next item is Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
We, we had a building in sight, a committee meeting this evening, had many things on the agenda. First off, we talked about looking at the old SME building on the college campus that is not being occupied right now and the potential use of the P twelve collegiate academy programs using that site as opposed to other, other parts of the college. And the cost that would be associated with that. Then we talked about the Dearborn High School renovation that everybody can see is ongoing. We finally got our state approval, which was what was holding us up, so they're moving forward. They hope to have, maintain that construction timeline and have it ready for January for occupancy. They are also moving forward with finishing up on the cafeteria there and using some of that surplus money for, for some of the cafeteria renovation. The Berry Center renovations, we asked for architectural drawings and they are in the middle of taking care of that and we should have that, I think, by August, we were told. And along with a construction timeline. We also discussed air conditioning in schools and a short-term solutions versus long-term solutions. The short-term solutions are within our budget capabilities and we will be looking to move forward with providing some air-conditioned opportunities in every building, be it a media center or some such location that the students can move into on hot days to cool off. The long-term would be a much more costly and is not within our budget possibility. It is going to be included in the conversation with the Infrastructure Committee and we will be having a presentation in July about what those costs might be looking like. We also talked about the operations infrastructure work for the summer of twenty eighteen, which means that all those other projects, track re-asphalting, playground equipment, other smaller projects at all of our school properties will continue and be ready for the opening of school in the fall. And then we just kind of heard quickly about the kitchen renovations that are ongoing and, and what they're doing and not doing.
Thank you, nice report.
The, yeah, the policy meeting, the policy committee met and we discussed a proclamation that makes April as Arab American Heritage Month. We discussed a policy of staff using cell phones and technology-based information systems.
Any, any other reports? Thank you, next item, please.
Next item is Board Member or Superintendent Commentary.
Justinos. I'm worried about this, all right, that's our trustee Barry.
The, the reason he's laughing is because after the last college meeting, the committee asked me a question and we got into a discussion, I said, that's funny, I'm, I'm reading a book about the conversation that we had. And I promised the next time I seen him, I'd bring him the book and it's the first time I've seen him, but I wanted to make a comment before I gave him the book. When we were in San Antonio, one of those networking sessions, I engaged a veteran board member from New Mexico and we started talking about, you know, comparing things about our district and we find out that we have, you know, various similar issues and challenges and successes too. Then I asked her a question, I said, I said, you know what? It was on the, before I got on the board, there was issues going on that I saw, then when I got on the board, maybe about five years ago, similar issues and my opinion is those issues still continue. She starts laughing hysterically, like, what did I say? She says, what, you think you're very unique when it comes to this? This happens everywhere. What happens is you have these amazing teachers that aspire to be leaders in our district. And when they become leaders, they change. The problem ten years ago, five years ago, and starting to see it now is it affects the board members too. We, as board members, we get caught up in that. I remember about five years ago, two former board members who have a discussion, I was the rookie on the board and one reached out, the other one said, and apologized for some of the things that he put, some of the board, first board member put the other board member through. What am I, what's the name of this book, maybe go explain what I'm talking about? Escaping the School Leader's Dump Tank. Escaping the School Leader's Dump Tank, How to Prevail When Others Want to See You Down. Again, it's not a reflection on our teachers, they're amazing teachers. And they move up into leadership roles and they forget why they got into education. I don't have time to read, but I couldn't put this book down. It explained a lot of things that I've seen with my own eyes the last ten years, twelve years in this district. So if you decide to pick up this book and you start reading it and you think you're one of those people that are sitting in the chair with Dump Tank, you probably are. Or you might be the one throwing the balls at the tank, Dump Tank, you probably are. But what's even worse is sometimes sitting around and not doing anything or saying anything or engaging. This book offered a lot of best practices, a lot of explanations. Great teachers go to school to become educators and this is the most honorable profession in the world, in our history. But what happens is when they be, they get to a certain level, they get disconnected from the students and they forget. They start looking at budgets, they start looking at numbers, students are no longer personal for them, it's a number and they forget what they got into, so that, this book, I'm very thankful to that lady recommending this book, it explained a lot of things to me, so. There you go, it's all yours.
Thank you.
If you like it, you have to buy twenty books per district.
Okay. Any other comments on Board Member Superintendent Commentary, yes?
I'll keep it quick, I just wanted to mention, you heard about the Rotary and the benefits of students and the scholarships and I know next year I'm coming in as Rotary President for Dearborn, trustee Thorpe's on the board, he's been past president and trustee Nasser's involved on the new executive board coming in. And we have other administrators involved. Anyway, that, we see the benefits with our youth and our students, we also get a lot of scholarships, so like all our service clubs in Dearborn, we really appreciate. But that's one we do have a, just wanted to mention, there's a fundraiser on the eighteenth for Buffalo Wild Wings that does support those efforts and we do get a lot back for our students, so that's one of the reasons why I've been heavily involved with the Rotary. And so I just wanted to mention that, it's one of those, the schools do that a lot where they do the fundraiser where if you go, then there's a certain percentage that'll come back, so I just wanted to highlight that for Rotary. And then I didn't mention this, but I want to thank, we, we approved the ADSA contract. I want to thank the ADSA and the leadership on their side, Dr. Tyne and I believe Andy Dennison, there's others involved. And I also want to thank our side, Mason Ali Basie, Rob Cedarland and Tom Wall for the great work they were doing on the negotiating team. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items?
Hearing none, next item.
We're going to wrap up on time. Future meeting dates, Monday, June eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Audit Committee Meeting, six thirty PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the President's Conference Room. Monday, June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting, seven PM at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosina Boardroom. Monday, June twenty-fifth, this is our second meeting in June. Monday, June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, P through twelve Board of Education Meeting, seven PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom. Monday, October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, which was approved earlier, P through twelve Board Study Session, five PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom. That's all I have.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for being here.